I'll be down here today. We will expedite as quick as possible. Mr. Wood and Mr. Cottin are absent today as we continue our schedule of alternating our commissioners during this time of COVID outbreak. This particular time, I'm going to ask Mr. Westbrook to lay the same pledge, and then I'll offer our prayer for Mr. Westbrook.
I pledge my pledge of allegiance and sleep. I am the nation's representative of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our own.
Go ahead and pray quickly. Heavenly Father, thank you today for all the many blessings that you've given to us, as deserving preachers as we are. We realize that you know all things and that you stand as the ruler and sustainer of this world itself. And as we go further this day, if you leave God direct us in a way that only you can, that you would direct our steps and set our minds on those principles of those things that honor you. Father, we ask to bless our many and varied communities, bless those around this table, bless those that are here today. Be thankful for the blessing of knowing these who are here and their dedication and perseverance to the people that they serve. Father, give us grace to serve acceptably with reverence and with God be dear. Lead God direct us whatsoever care for us for the unroll of our problems. We will be careful, give you the honor and praise of all. Jesus' name we pray. Thank you, Mr. Westbrook. First item of business is to approve our minutes from the last meeting. You see them sometime back, if there's any changes that need to be made. If not, I'll solicit a motion that we accept them as you receive. Your second.
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Any favor, but don't say aye. Anyone opposed, say objection. Thank the motion, carry. First item of business is engineering. Brooklyn, South Bay, and Fluke. I'm sure we're speaking to each other.
Yes, Tommy, he's on vacation this week and asked me to provide an update specifically on the road damage from our Easter flooding and our annual paving on our road closures from Easter. We had about eleven particular locations where we had some major damage, where roads were, pipes and roadways were washed out or blown out. As of right now, we have reopened seven of those locations. We have one that is a temporary repair that has been reopened, but we will go back and do additional work. And as of today, three have yet to be opened. The first one's on County Road 44 up here. The pipe are in, a lot of the work is done. They were in the process of putting asphalt in last week and the paving machine went down. And a local contractor looked at it yesterday and is supposed to be getting with me sometime today to provide us a quote to finish up that paving and hopefully get that thing back open. I don't know if we'll be able to this week. I don't know what his schedule is quite yet. But we're just, we'll need just a little bit more time to put the final layers of asphalt on it. We'll have that road back open. The road department has moved down to County Road 33 down below Hammond's Crossroads. This is going to be a difficult location. It's very deep and it's going to take a while to get this one repaired. They moved there and be starting to work on it soon. And then also on County Road 641 east of Mentone. We've not made to that location yet. I didn't know if it was going to be mentioned. Mr. Harrow mentioned it this morning. We have received, we've not received the official documentation yet, but according to AL.com, we have received the federal declaration for this event. So we will be receiving federal assistance for this work, which is a major, major help. Without that, we would be in pretty dire consequences, I believe. But with that, we will be receiving that assistance, which will be a great help. Any particular questions on that?
If not, go ahead.
And in regards to our paving, as far as I know, there are only two roads remaining in District One that have not been paved as part of our county transportation plan with the new rebuild Alabama funding. And that may take place this week. I'm not sure what his schedule is when he's going to be back up here. But as far as we know, there's only two roads left. So this has worked very well from our side and from Mr. Blot's side. I believe he's very, very well pleased in the way that we've done this, the way this process has worked. And I believe this is the way we're going to continue to do. We will be working on the transportation plan for the next fiscal year in the coming weeks. And we will be adopting that plan before the end of August. Till then, any questions in regards to our paving?
Go ahead.
Last year, we had to rebid our liquid calcium chloride annual bid. They were not able to extend it. First of June, I sent a letter to Southeastern Road Treatment asking if they would be able to extend them for this year. And they said that they would. So it would be my recommendation that we extend our existing annual bid with Southeastern Road Treatment for our liquid calcium chloride for the next year of August 1st through July 31st.
Any questions, some recommendations? If not, are your motions that we accept this recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Westbrook.
Your second. Motion second in discussion. Any favor, but don't say aye. Anyone opposed, say objection. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Westbrook.
Next, I have four different speed limit resolutions on four different roads. I'll just read through all of them and then y'all can do it under one motion. County Road 1004 is a paved road between County Road 462 and County Road 52. It's in the drilling area. We will post that at 25 miles an hour. County Road 781, between State Road 75 and County Road 776, is a paved road. We will set that speed limit at 25 miles an hour also. County Road 776, between County Road 141 and State Road 75, is a paved road. We will set it at 40 miles an hour. And County Road 667, between County Road 134 and State Road 117, is a paved road. And we will set it at 25 miles an hour as well.
Any questions, some recommendations? If not, are your motion, Honors, request? Your second?
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Any favor, but don't say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say objection. Thank you. Go ahead with the damage claim.
We have three separate damage claims, and I'll do these the same way. We have one from Mr. Tim Poe for County Road 788. Had a busted tire from a pothole. Ms. Andrea Wright, County Road 51, had a busted windshield from a brush cutter. And Jimmy Michaelhane, County Road 89, just above DeSoto Park. She had a cut tire due to the edge of the pavement. I have reviewed all of these instances and find that they do appear to be legitimate claims. And so I would request that we send this, send all of these on to C R E S.
Any questions, some recommendations? If not, are your motion for pardon, the insurance carrier?
Make the motion.
Your second.
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Any favor, but don't say aye. Anyone opposed, say objection. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Westbrook. Sheriff's Office, Craig.
We got a few things this morning. First, we got a couple of trainings. I'd like to send Josh Erickson, Weston Fortner, and David Davis to some trainings in Andalusia, Alabama. Specialize in investigation type trainings.
Any questions concerning that recommendation? If not, are your motion, Honors, request? Your second?
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Any favor, but don't say aye. Anyone opposed? Thank the motion, carry.
Just some personnel things. First, I'd like to accept our retirement. I'm Lieutenant Alfred Rickstad, effective July 1st.
Any questions concerning the recommendation? Mr. Rickstad, it's been a long time. We thank you for your service. Are your motion that we accept that?
Make the motion.
Your second? Motion second in discussion. Any favor, but don't say aye. Anyone opposed, say objection. Thank you.
We've got some hires, students doing all that together. We'd like to hire Alfred back as a part-time deputy. Not a new position per se, just to add to our part-time pool. Won't be any more money out. It'll just be as needed. Would also like to transfer Carl Blot from transport deputy to patrol deputy to replace Lieutenant Rickstad's spot. Would like to hire Tim Devlin as a transport deputy, retroactive to June 29th, to replace Carl Blot. He was in transport. And I'd like to hire John Moses as an as-needed courthouse security deputy. That's an open position.
Any questions concerning the recommendation? If not, are your motion, Honors, request? Your second?
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Any favor, but don't say aye. Anyone opposed? Thank the motion, carry.
All right, one more thing. I'd like to talk about the COGS grant. If you guys are familiar with that, it comes available. I don't know if it's every year anymore. I think it's a little more rare that it comes available now. But it became open and one of our, Andrea Woodall had applied for that grant. And what that is, it's a hiring grant. It allows sheriff's offices and police departments to hire deputies. And they, you know, they pay for most of that cost for a certain amount of time. There were only eleven agencies in the whole state that got it. And we were one of those out of hundreds that applied just in Alabama. There's less than 600 across the nation that received it. What that's going to allow us to do is hire four deputies. And it's a 75-25 match. So the Department of Justice will pay 75% of that. So essentially hiring four deputies, we're getting basically four deputies for the price of one. That's how that works. And they pay everything, or 75% of everything, salary, benefits, everything except gas for the first three years. And then the fourth year, we're obligated to keep them on at our expense for that fourth year. And then after that, I mean, hope they'll keep them on. That's how that works. It's, I have the money here.
Is this 488,000?
Yes, 488,000. I had that somewhere.
The award of 488,000, so a good dollar.
That's it.
Yeah. And our local cash bank match for this award will be 162,000. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I think the county had gotten this grant somewhere around the year 2000?
2001.
Somewhere in that neighborhood. And that was what allowed us to hire SROs at that time. And I think that's, this is the first time since then that we've been able to get it. I'd like to commend Andrea Woodall on that. Obviously, it's a very competitive grant. It's only eleven agencies in the whole state got it. We appreciate her. Just wanted to put that in front of you guys. I think that has to be appreciated.
Thank you. John, you hear of this, I congratulate the Sheriff's Department. Andrea Woodall, their hard work. The agencies that did pursue, we're very appreciative of it. And I commend you for persevering in this area. Any questions?
I got a comment.
Go ahead.
The COGS grant program is similar to a program that fire service uses. I'm familiar with it from that aspect. I know several departments from Raines, I think, here locally, Coleman, others in the central part of the state, and several other departments that have utilized that safer grant program, which is the same thing on the fire service side, to benefit them and being able to add to their staff. And it works well. It does take some planning to get that budget prepared for that fourth year. But if you do so, that's a great asset to you. So I'm proud of you that we got that.
I mean, I think it's to benefit, I think, of the county. I mean, it's four, forty people, you know, working. That's just, you have that much more.
I think you put that forward.
I'll put that in the form of motion.
Your second?
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Any favor, but don't say aye. Anyone opposed, say objection. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. We appreciate it.
Next item is letting old pads and precinct scanners.
Mr. President, Commissioner, Counselor, Lawrence. Mr. Sharp, how are y'all doing? Media, how are y'all? There you go. You got a good side shot here.
Yes.
Now my phone rate is laying back down and it's in my hearing aid, so I got to take them out. Mr. Sharp and myself have been working for quite a few months on DS 200 machines. The Secretary of State has come up with the means of paying for this. And I think we're secure through 2023. And it's like, it's the rent of the machines. And the DS 200s are like $5,100 approximately if we used every one of them per election. And we're also, we done got paid, I think, through November of this year. I think we've received the monies on that. And I just wanted y'all to bring y'all up to date on our plans there, upgrading from the 100s to the 200s. I think we implemented them in 2006 with our first election. And Mr. Harrow and myself, we was working on that for quite a few years. And we got that when I took the Probeck judge. And they have really, really served the public well. They're getting to where we're having to spend quite a bit of money to keep them updated and breakdown. So I think it would be great if we could go ahead and go with the 200 machines. And Mr. Sharp has pretty well all the paperwork on that. Do y'all have any questions on that?
Oh, we break down, tell y'all, I was there, we're starting on all that. It's such an improvement for us to keep us where we are now. But this will be a regular improvement, smooth process. You look sharp, Mark's job. But we also need not forget Mr. Merritt. He made this possible. And we've got our monies through the Secretary of State of 2023. And so we want to not forget him. But also you have done good work on all this. We appreciate that. But any questions you have about that?
Also, David Smith works for Secretary of State. David is, I say David Smith, David.
Brewer.
Brewer. David Smith, he works at the county jail for you, doesn't he? David Brewer, he put in quite a, quite a good amount on this.
In contact with him, we have. Great job. We appreciate that. Do we need a motion to that?
Enter, we probably need a motion to be able to enter into a contract with ESNS, Election System Software.
You don't understand, we're in a contract as a big leasing machine. That they take off through 2023 through the Secretary of State. Any questions? If not, are your motion, we accept the judge's request.
Make motion.
Your second?
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Any favor, but don't say aye. Anyone opposed, say objection. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
We've got going on to the poll pads. Knowing is a company that we've been working with for probably a couple, three years. I went to some classes. We done a pilot program and it worked real well. It's a lot of work to program them and get them out to the public. But it's so much more, especially with COVID going on. You walk in, slide your license, sign the pad, ballot, you're gone. So there's a whole lot less contact with the poll workers between them and the voters instead of signing the book. And I think we have secured the money. Ain't no thinking, I've got a check. They sent me a check for, we got $13,000. And this is a $51,000 project. We had received $13,000 in some odd dollars previously for this. And now we've secured $31,753 from the Secretary of State, John Merritt, to finish this project. So it would be no cost out of our pocket except, I think, the second year, same thing through 2023, as far as the second and the third year. And it's about $100 per pad after 2023 to program them.
Again, this is a great improvement.
This will be a great, expedite the process, bust more quickly and take the right service. So, and again, appreciate you all, Mr. Merritt, if possible. Okay, and I entertain a motion that we accept and enter into a contract with Knowing to purchase these.
Thank you, sir.
These are not a lease, these are a purchase.
Any question? If not, are your motion, Honors, request?
Make the motion.
Your second? Motion second in discussion. Any favor, but don't say aye. Anyone opposed, say objection. Thank the motion, carry.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Let the record be said, you know.
And here's a check.
There's one more that checked out.
He sent it to me.
I started it.
That's you, Commissioner, Mr. Sharp.
The, and I'm going to talk a little bit about these other things here, just a little bit, that we've already done. The Revenue Commission's Office, they have a tax settlement, tax sale every, every year. And they have what they call a, they call it insolvent errors in taxes and litigation. And that is before you, and that has to be approved by the commission. You can see the numbers over there where they go. But this is monies that the state would be involved with, not the county. But we're required to pass this and this is a requirement. So we need a, we need a motion to approve this resolution.
Gentlemen, I think you have this in the package if I look it up. It's all the things that we do, but it's something that's necessary. Any questions? If not, are your motion that we honor, Mr. Sharp's request?
Something.
Your second?
Second.
Motion second, it's good. Any favor, but don't say aye. Anyone opposed, say objection. Thank you. Mr. Sharp?
The next thing is called a mapping agreement. This is, it's really a agreement between ALDOT, State Department Transportation, and our real political office, their mapping services. And basically, they will pay us $10,000 to utilize our mapping system. And this is something we've done over the years. And so I would recommend that we enter into this agreement.
Any questions about this? We've done this over the years. It's just another agreement that has learned with ALDOT. So if there is no question, this is a motion that we honor, Mr. Sharp's request. Your second? Motion second? Any favor, but don't say aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Motion, carry. Go ahead, Mr. Sharp.
The next item is from Leslie at our animal adoption center. They're required to have continuing education. She says it's going to be a little tricky this year with COVID, but she's requesting attendance to this annual Southern Baby Conference.
Thank you. This is again one of those, you know, conferences that's necessary for us to keep up with the normal pace of things. But I would ask you to make a motion that we honor the request to send her to this. Any questions? Right? Motion?
Motion.
Your second?
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Any favor, but don't say aye. Anyone opposed, say objection. Thank you, gentlemen. Go ahead, Mr. Sharp.
I was wanting to talk about RSA Tier Two Resolution. I want to go back and talk a little bit about the items that Judge Osborne and had mentioned and then Chief David Gregg mentioned. On the COGS grant, that is a grant that will cost money down the road. It's one deputy, it basically, one out of four, we pay for the next. That we would be able to pay for. And the reason that we want to use for that, it's, I know y'all are familiar with simple life service use tax. That's been several, several years, but we've been getting that revenue. That revenue has increased. And so that's been helpful to us to do different things. And a couple of things it's allowed us to do is to hire additional COGS at the coast, new additional SROs. And then that will help with this process at the end of the forty years, end of three years. There's going to be some additional COGS, probably about 200,000, a little better than that. That'll be toward that program. So that funding will be given toward that. Also, we'll use that funding in this election cost that Judge Osborne mentioned. The first one, the poll pads, that'll be about, about 20,000 per year for maintenance. And then the election, the way that, the way they do the elections is, for instance, today, we're having an election, we're having one election. Well, in the primary, we actually had two elections. We had a Democratic election and a Republican election. So soon to be in $5,000, $5,100, it would've been $10,000. And so if you have, if you have a constitutional amendment that might be on there separately, which I can't remember if we had any of those on there in March, but that would be three elections, they can't have three elections. So they kind of get you that way. But this, these funds that we're receiving through the SSU2 will allow us to do those types of things. And then, of course, the precinct scanners, there's, there's maintenance costs. $1,000 a year. Those are, those are going to be very beneficial to us. But I just want to kind of mention that, that that's, that's some of the items that we do use, use that funding for. And then another thing that we use that funding for is this next item that I want to talk about, the RSA Tier Two Resolution. Thanks to, to represent a gladiator, this action is allowing local governments to take their Tier Two employees, which are employees hired after January 1st, 2013. Those employees have a reduced retirement to what the employees prior to January 1st, 2013. It's about 30% or better difference in retirement that they get. Plus, there's, there's actually an increase in cost to them that they have to pay more than their current employees. But what this legislation would do is it would allow local governments to make that decision. So to opt into it, you have until next May to opt into it for 2021. We can go ahead and opt into it now. We have to do that by August 21st. A lot of the local, a lot of the counties and municipalities are going ahead and opting into that now. One of our employees back in the back, Deb back there, she was maybe about the fifth employee, maybe the fourth employee hired as a Tier Two employee without a reduced retirement. Now, about half of our employees are under Tier Two, which is a substantially reduced retirement. There is cost to this. Part of that's going to be, there's going to be a one and a half percent increase to those Tier Two employees. And then there's, there's additional cost to the county. It's not a huge amount of money, but it, it's some money. And it'll, the first year is about $36,000. And it'll continue to go up from there. But I, that thing, I believe it will help encourage, we've lost a lot of employees. The retirement hasn't went down. And so opportunity that the county has, there's a window of opportunity for it. But we would use, again, use this SSU2 money that we received to go toward that, that process. So that would be my recommendation to go in, go toward, change this Tier Twos to Tier Ones retirement benefits. Any questions?
Mr. Sharp, we appreciate that. I just say this too, that every county has options, there's an option. And...
There are some counties and cities that are not.
Some counties and cities that are not. And, but we thank enough of our employees to, whatever we can do to help them, that's what we intend to do. The gentleman around this table and Mr. Cottin and Mr. Wood are not here today because of our scheduling, but they only need to make sure that they were on board with this and to inform you that they would sign this resolution.
We've talked about them, about the orange board of the, of the resolution.
So we thank... So we, we thank, uh, you and Mr. Sharp for working on this, giving us these figures. Uh, any question about this, gentlemen? I think we've talked about, if there may be a question. Again, we thank you for working on this, and, uh, I, I, I know that our employees will appreciate it very much. So I, I'll solicit a motion that we, uh, set Mr. Sharp's recommendation.
It's been, it's been a long time coming, and so, um, I'm, I'm most happy in my motion that, um, we go through like this transition.
Thank you, Mr. Westbrook, your second.
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Any favor that I don't say aye? Anyone opposed that your objection? Let the record so state that, uh, Mr. Wood and Mr. Kike will sign this resolution even though they are absent. Uh, and we will also sign it, and, uh, we appreciate them so very much. Did I, did I ask for a, okay, any favor that I don't say aye? Okay, anyone opposed that your objection? Thank you, motion cap, that's very important, but, uh, now surplus vehicles.
Uh, surplus vehicles, you know, we, we've started in this process of, uh, of rotating out of sheriff's vehicles. Uh, and we've had very, a lot of success with our, with our trucks at the road department, our dump trucks. And, and that's been a good, a good program for the county. It's, it's, uh, gives maintenance cost to, and kept, kept vehicles in good shape. And we're trying to do that in o- other fleet of vehicles that we have. And so currently, uh, we have, uh, these five vehicles that were purchased last year, uh, for, uh, five investigator vehicles. Uh, the cost on those, the total cost on those was around a hundred and seventy thousand. Uh, we've run those for a year, and we've got two vehicles, one's for one hundred and sixty-five thousand and five dollars, and one's for one sixty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. So within one year, it's been, we're within four thousand dollars of what we actually spent for them. So, uh, I, I think that's pretty good. I think that's real good on, on, uh, fleet vehicles. Uh, so these vehicles have a variety of mileage on them. Uh, some of them are, uh, well, they're, they're twenty-eight to thirty thousand miles on them. So we've had them thirty thousand miles, very little in the way of maintenance. And, uh, and then we'll have new vehicles for those, those investigators. So, uh, over the years, we have had vehicles in sheriff's office that they have been driving. It's in the three hundred thousand mile range. And, and that's not safe for them, it's not safe, it's, you know, it's costly to maintain. And so this program that we just started with the new sheriff's administration. And, uh, our, our plan is we, we started out with ten, but we've got twenty and up, until we're gonna go to twenty-five. And that's gonna be our number, that we're gonna, next year we'll do twenty-five, we'll continue that process and see how long this works, and if it, if it's, if it's successful, we'll continue it. If it's not, we will let them drive old, old beat up cars. Of course, I've told them too, that if, if, uh, we quit wrecking them, we might, uh, but I know that's not, that, I'm sorry, wreck. Uh, a lot of that's not, it's not our fault, um, but, uh, they have knuckleheads that you run, get running into and different things. So, but, uh, we, we insure these, and so we, that's, that's helped us too. Uh, we've had to replace a few of them, but, uh, I think this is a great bid. I appreciate, uh, everybody that settled out, the commission, and, and of course, Mr. Burton, or sheriff's office, for helping us maintain those vehicles and, and working over it. So, uh, the, the two bidders was, uh, Jay and Wood in Twin C. Jay and Wood have the best bid for us, so I recommend, uh, we have, we sell these, these vehicles to Jay and Wood.
Thank you. Uh, this, this has worked out very well for us, uh, and, uh, uh, just because of being, being better. And, uh, we're, we're thanking them, because I have, uh, Mr. Sharp, I would imagine, one thing. The word going ahead is not politically correct.
Oh, I see, that is, that is twenty twenty, yeah.
You have another word you'd like to say, Steve?
Uh, there's, there's really not a better word, I can, I can, so, absolutely, yes. I digress, sorry to interrupt my master.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Gentlemen, you hear, Mr. Sharp recommended that we, uh, sell these to Jay and Wood. Uh, any questions about that? Stop there.
It's a good program, and it is working out real well. I make a motion that we proceed to sell Jay and Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Westbrook, your second.
Your second.
Motion second in discussion, any favor that I don't say aye? Anyone opposed that your objection? Thank you. Uh, the next item is, uh, board of board from the PHR, there are two board of board was coming up. Miss Kathy Clifton's, uh, term is, uh, up, and so it's, it's totally recording. Both of them said that they would serve again, so I'll ask for a motion that we reappoint them to PHR. Motion, your second.
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Any favor that I don't say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion cap. Next, uh, item is legislative committee, uh, member. I served as that from the county, uh, for a number of years, and I'm willing to do that again, unless one of you all want another job. But, uh, if, if you all allow me to serve again, I would appreciate that. Solicited a motion, uh, that you reappoint me to that position.
My motion, Rick.
Your second.
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Any favor that I don't say aye? Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate that. The next item is Constantine property. Several, uh, runs ago, we had, of course, this tremendous flood, uh, that flooded out our property from, uh, the, uh, where the tourist association is and the economic development building is. And we have found some property out on the, uh, Apple Road, uh, Constantine property, uh, where Constantine is near the water, three acres of land out there. And, uh, we are in the process, and we'd like to, if you all would agree with us, uh, purchase that property. Uh, and, uh, we think it's a, it's a good buy. We can move our facilities, uh, out after our EDA and, uh, other, uh, entities that we have. Uh, it's a beautiful building, three acres of land, and, uh, we would like to, would agree with the commission, and they all are agreeing on this, uh, to go ahead with the, and to start the process, purchase this property. I'm gonna let Mr. Sharp, uh, uh, explain to you in detail to, to Sharp, you would.
Uh, one of the things, when we looked at that property, and I don't know if, I think all of y'all have, when I've looked at it, it is, uh, it's very nice. It's well worth the price. And, uh, I think that, uh, it'll be very beneficial to the county and, and the facilities that it has. Much better than the, the current facility that they have. It's, obviously, it's in a, in a flood zone, and, and that property, uh, really needs to be about three foot higher than really what it is to, to be a, to be a good facility for, uh, what it, what it's currently being used for. Uh, some of the other places there, Hardee's, and, of course, the house always, but it's, it's just, it's just, it's just too low, really, to have, uh, what, what we need it for. But this is great property, and we've, what, what we've thought about doing is, uh, on this particular property is, uh, is doing a, maybe a ten-year, uh, uh, purchase through First State Bank. I've talked to, to the president, to David Henderson over there, and, uh, he has talked with, uh, with our, with our county attorney, Mr. McCurdy. And, and, uh, we've got a, got a letter prepared, uh, that they require by the bank to do this. And it's, we're looking at, uh, about two point seven five percent, uh, on the, uh, loan on that. And if, uh, you know, was you gonna talk about tourism building or?
Well, go ahead.
Well, one, one thing we had talked about on that tourist structure is, is, uh, if we ever decide to sell that, and there, there's some interest in that, if, if we did sell that, then we would use that money toward this property, uh, and, and help toward that property, get that paid off a little quicker. But, but I think it's a good, it's a good rate, it's a very good piece of property. I think it'd be very beneficial to us to pan it out over ten years, it's not gonna hurt us too much. And so, uh, again, this would be one of those properties that we would, we would pay through the SSU two funds we'd get. And so, uh, that'd be my recommendation, and I appreciate Jeff for, for working with David. And, uh, in that process, it should be pretty smooth, uh, purchasing property, so.
We've spoken with the law, and the most we'd like to have is our, our county, okay, the letter and all the documents that has been acquired. Uh, I'd like to ask the commission, uh, yeah, again, they'll just, we're favorable for this, give them, give a sharp authority, uh, to go ahead with whatever paperwork is necessary to, to get this on the, like, any questions about, gentlemen? I know y'all have been looking at, and, uh, it, it really be, uh, something beneficial to us. And then, uh, when, when we decide to, uh, dispose of the other property, the money will go toward this. So, uh, it is, uh, put to the table for everybody involved. Any questions about? If not, I hear motion about that.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Black, your second.
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Any favor that I don't say aye? Anyone opposed that your objection? Thank you so very much. We appreciate all of you that are here today, and we thank you for your presence. Our next meeting will be two weeks from today. We've been having, uh, meetings, uh, once a month, but our next meeting will be two weeks from today, July the twenty-eighth. And I hope that you will, uh, be able to attend, uh, and, uh, we will see now the COVID nineteen. One other thing I wanted to make mention about COVID nineteen. Since last Friday, uh, I just got reported this morning, we've had a hundred and twenty U.K.'s just since Friday. So, uh, all of you be safe, uh, where you land, where you go. And, uh, our priority is that this was in the past, we will get back some, some, to somewhat of a normal schedule. And we thank you for your cooperation. So I hear motion, Richard.
Motion, Richard.